...over here. You have to fill that out here and speak. Speaking will get a limit of three minutes, okay? We'll plug you down. It'll be a presentation first. There is an agenda up here on how the meeting's gonna run. Anybody who's done bullet points up here at the front for what the community wants and is talking about for the last one. Nice talking. If anyone is playing, anyone's playing or making mistakes, if you have it in writing, just put your name on it so that you can leave it up at the fun here so we'll put it into the record. whichever way you're going, just if it's in writing, just put your name on it and we'll put it right into the record. Okay? Thank you.
All board members, please come up towards the front. Any board members come up the first two rows?
They want all the board members in the first two rows, please. So if we can move off that, you're right.
Good evening, everyone. I am my first chairman of Board 10 and calling to order a public hearing this evening in the matter of the zoning for quality and affordability text amendments N 160049ZRY and mandatory inclusionary housing text amendment N 160051ZRY, otherwise known as the Mayor's Housing Plan. We'll begin this evening by having a presentation on the plan from Mr. Jutan Horstman of the City Planning Committee.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me now? Is that good? Back? Good? My name is Jutan Horstman. I was former City Planning. I've been there for about eight years and been at Board 10 reasign for the entire eight years. So I'm gonna present two pieces, the mandatory inclusionary housing as well as the zoning for quality and affordability. They're two separate but complementary text amendments that support the Mayor's Housing Plan. So the texts are... Yeah, so the presentation's gonna be here. Hopefully, everyone can see it. Some people may rotate around, but I'll be speaking to this. So the texts are citywide, meaning that each of the 58... So the Housing New York is a complimentary plan to build and preserve 200,000 units of high-quality affordable housing over the next decade. The plan will create opportunities for New Yorkers with a range of incomes from the very lowest to those in the middle class and will foster vibrates in the first neighborhoods. These two text amendments are citywide, meaning that they are being referred out to all 58 community districts across the city. And so you'll all be seeing about the same information. So we are... It is becoming increasingly difficult for many New Yorkers to afford housing in their neighborhoods. Our population is growing and the supply of housing isn't picking up. Many people are paying more than they can afford in rent. While more housing can be created, we need more of it to be affordable of a wide range of incomes. So, you know, with affordable housing prices, we're seeing the gap between recent incomes decreasing, higher end burden, insufficient housing actions, limited supply of affordable housing or affordable units, and increase of population growth, 230,000 new residents since 2010 and 600,000 more between that and 2014. So to address the facets of this challenge, the city is making efforts to create more affordable housing. So of the 200,000 units, we're looking at creating 80,000 new affordable units. Again, this is spread also across the entire city, which would improve the affordability. Second piece is preserving existing housing and preventing displacement, and the idea is to preserve 120,000 units of existing affordable units. And then also to plant or invest in strong neighborhoods. And this is planning studies that are doing in different neighborhoods, basically working with those neighborhoods, stakeholders, residents, and looking at different facets for the neighborhood to invest in those neighborhoods. One of the examples is either East New York and Brooklyn or Drum Avenue in the central Manhattan. So what is affordable housing? And in one of the handouts you do from HPD, it shows the full table, the full range of housing for from one person to four people in the range. But housing is considered affordable when household spend is no more than one-third of its income from rental services. And it goes by the area median income. The area income is a quality determinant metric used to determine income level, qualification for affordable housing. So 100% AMI for a family or the state 6,300, which is pretty high for state income. So now I'm going to speak about the two pieces. First, I'm going to speak about mandatory inclusionary housing. You'll see it written as M I H in several places throughout the text. So it's a citywide text amendment. So what is mandatory inclusionary housing? It's a new proposal to use zoning to require permanently affordable housing when future City Planning Commission actions infer substantial new housing. It's one of the key initiatives of Housing New York. So there's two important pieces to discuss with me. One is that it would create permanently affordable housing. Permanent is the important word there. And second is that it is only being applied after an area is upzoned. So currently, it's not being... It's not being applied to anywhere in District 10 or really anywhere in the city except for, I guess, East New York. Yeah, it's something that they're looking at applying this year. So the goals of the mandatory inclusionary housing is to promote diverse neighborhoods, ensure affordable housing areas, which we plan to grow, meet the needs of a range of low to moderate income New Yorkers, ensure the program meets legal standards. So a core goal of the city's efforts to plan for new housing is to ensure that promoting economically diverse neighborhoods where residents of various incomes can enjoy quality services, access to transportation, employment, and education. As described in the housing plan, this means reaching New Yorkers at a wider range of income levels than have been reached in past, so both lower-income, moderate, and low-income incomes. Based on extensive research into other mandatory inclusionary housing programs around the country, for this program to be legal and workable, we've designed it to be applied consistently and to work financially. So essentially, here is the...
Excuse me, question. No, I'd like to ask you a question. I don't see what you mean.
You're certain, wouldn't you do?
I understand.
No, no. Let me think.
I have a specific question.
Let me think.
I don't want... I want the other student back.
Okay. Public hearing. You will have...
I have a quick question.
No, it doesn't work that way. The deck, water, divorce. We form right to speak, everybody. That's why we have agenda, that's why we hand out these things. If you have a question, put it in writing.
I'm not putting anything in writing, I'm asking you.
You said, you said no.
No, I'm asking you right now. I don't need to put anything in.
You said no.
So then what? That's it? What am I... I don't understand. I asked you a specific question. If you would bring back the other student.
Ma'am, ma'am. When he does his presentation, after the presentation, you have questions, you will attempt to get them answered. Right now, we'd like him to run through it. If there's a portion we'd like him to go back to, you can know we'll make sure he goes back to it, all right?
I put it in there to go back to so... I put it in there. So this is the proposal. The proposal...
Can you?
Can you? The proposal is developed and run through process among many stakeholders and in conjunction with a comprehensive financial feasibility study run by a consultant who runs inclusionary housing across the city. So with that said, the proposal would be one of the most rigorous inclusionary housing requirements of any in the United States. Include several options that could be made available in any given area to enable the program to prioritize community housing needs in any area being upzoned to a client line. When under the following options will be applied. So option one here would allow for 25% of housing and average income of 60% of AMI. Option two, which would be 30% housing and average income of 8% of AMI, which is 62,154 per million approved. And then a third option, which is a workplace option. And so this is an option where modern income housing can make an important contribution to the housing supply. This workforce option can be made available to provide 30% of housing for an average income of 120% AMI. And so this... So some of the key pieces of the program. First, as previously mentioned, all the units required through mandatory inclusionary housing would remain permanently affordable. Only small projects, less than 10 units, would be exempted from the requirements. Or on buildings between 11 and 25 units, they could do a P and A in lieu of option where they would basically pay into a fund that would then stay within that community district for HPD to supply those. The fee would be based on the cost to provide those affordable units elsewhere. Second, all affordable units created through this program would need to be new units. There is no option for reserve existing units. Third, when a building contains both affordable rentals and market rate rentals, the affordable units need to be mixed in at least half of the building floors. So that way you're not consolidating all of the affordable units on one floor of one area. It's basically removing some of the things you've heard about, the four door and some of those things. Those are actually not allowed with this proposal. Additionally, affordable units may be provided in a standalone building. Finally, as the existing program, affordable units can be provided off-site by the... are within the same community district within a half-mile radius of the M I H requirement. But also, as a legal requirement for this program, hardship relief provision would be established. This would allow a BSA process for someone to go through. If there was an extreme exception where we haven't been able to factor it into our proposal, we basically made an option that could be approved without going through the requirement. So M I H is one of the tools that work together with the rest of the Housing New York plan. The strategic use of subsidies can reach incomes as low as 30% of AMI. It would due to the reform of the state's 421A tax exemption program, would require affordable housing in every rental building receiving benefits. This allows for more affordable housing and a broad range of incomes. And there's no benefit to, you know, the luxury condos, the hiring, the developers. And then the second piece that I'll begin from a second, the zoning for quality and affordability will promote senior and affordable housing, aid efficient use of housing subsidies, and promote better buildings. So this is essentially where we're at in the process. I'm just gonna almost skip over this because it applies to both. But we're right now in the first 60-day public review. We're, you know, reaching out to all the community boards and the city for president for our board, who would then come back to City Planning for the commission, whether it be a public review and then City Council meeting. So now I want to get into zoning for quality and affordability, which is the second piece. And just to reiterate, this is also a text amendment like mandatory inclusionary housing. It's also being referred out to all 58 other communities. So I just wanted to set up with a few things that this proposal is not going to be... It does not have additional market residential F A R for area, which is the bulk of buildings. It does not change parking requirements for market rate housing. There are no provisions to that encourage teardowns. We're not providing or giving additional F A R. It's not a rezoning. There's no elimination of any contextual zoning districts or remapping of any zoning districts. There's no change to, as of right, residential rules in one and two-family districts. There's no reduction in the amount of green or open spaces required for buildings. The proposal would not produce dramatic changes in development in any neighborhood and does not affect the lower-than-C group management or city on special district regulations, which are very specific to we intend. So there's two main goals, and I'll get into each one because they kind of play into both of these categories. Quality, which is to encourage better buildings that would contribute to attractive and comfortable neighborhoods. And affordability, which is making zoning work better with financial and other programs, create more affordable housing for a wide range of New Yorkers. So here is kind of the pre-summarize of what I'm gonna say, just to give you a kind of setup. So what this ZQ8 does is it, one, allows for better ground floors in residential floor-to-ceiling heights. It allows in mid-density districts an additional five feet height for residential and commercial. It allows for greenery and building articulation. It supports affordable senior housing and long-term care by updating definitions as well as providing predictable building heights where there are none today. It supports two degrees of subsidies to allow parking to be optional for low-income affordable housing and transit, and supports efficient buildings in areas matched for inclusionary So the quality piece. So again, I'm going to... I've got a lot, so I'm gonna kind of go quickly because we're gonna be touching on those pieces. So I want to get a little set up about what contextual is before I start talking about it constantly. So contextual buildings, so in 1961, when we had our first zoning resolution, basically you had all these zoning districts across New York City, and they were, you can see in the bottom there, R6, R7-1, which basically the developer, there's no maximum height on any, so it goes by a tax exposure plan, which basically if it's set back, it can build as tall as it wants. In 1987, we changed our text to allow for contextual buildings. And what that did was it basically promoted housing to fit better within the neighborhood. So you gave, you had a maximum building height, but in order to offset that, we gave them a little bit more bulk. That was the trade-off. And it fits better in the neighborhood. It's really more where you've got your street wall that goes along. So there's actually contextual zoning districts, which are R6A, R7A, anything with a suffix letter, that's a contextual zoning district, although there are no higher-density districts than Community District 10 for that. But there are the R6 and R7-1 districts, which have, which basically give the developer the option of either doing the contextual or the height factor district. So when I talk about contextual, I'm talking about the building form that has a maximum So there's some things that basically came out of this 1987. So in 1910, even going back further, on the left, you can see, this is more your standard. You have, you know, very high floor-to-ceiling heights, 10, 12 feet, you have separation from the street where there would be, you know, steps up. But then after, in the 1987 contextual zoning districts, we had a lot of the building on the right, where you had about an eight- to nine-story floor-to-ceiling height, kind of very similar ground floor and building façades, because that's what the rules were allowing. But we found that developers and, you know, residents, communities, you know, are kind of tired of some of this same boring type housing. And so we're actually looking at improving the quality of the housing. So here's just a couple of examples in some median districts and some of the reasons that zoning can change. You see these undesirable ground floor, you know, blank façades, street walls. On the picture on the bottom, you can see the windows are right at the street level. And I'll kind of explain here in a second why that's important. Again, on this building, when you see around the corner, you've got basically a fault ranking on one street, and then you go around the side street, you have just blank walls. That's very standard now with the biggest contextual zoning. So some of the goals here are to encourage better for ground floor. And so in order to do that, in R6 and R7-1 zoning districts, and so to basically tell you where that is in Community District 10, that would be Allen Bay area and then a little bit of Westchester Square, are the two areas that have R6 and R7-1. So in those two areas, we are seeking to allow for five additional feet for all building heights. And what that will do is, here's an example of, you know, kind of what we're seeing today with the ground floor, the close-up for commercial use, ground floor, where they have about 10 feet on the ground floor. With the additional five feet, it allows for commercial use. We find that commercial uses need 15 feet typically for ground floor, and so the existing 10 feet is not providing what we need. For residential, one of the issues is on the ground floor, basically your windows are right at street level. So people are walking by, they're looking into your windows, no one wants to share their apartment with the people outside. So that five feet basically offsets. So the people walking are now not looking into your windows, people feel more comfortable using your windows. That's the five-foot provision really. So the next goal is the medium and high-density contextual districts. So when I say that, I'm referring to the R6 and R7-1, again, it's gonna be Allen Bay and Westchester. This will allow buildings to step back a few feet from the sidewalk, allowing some green space in the front. Right now, they have to be half the street wall line. It allows some courtyard, bay windows, and some other features, which I'll show you in the next episodes. So here, kind of the existing situation today, you know, there's a little flexibility permitted for articulation, so flat façades, it doesn't line up with neighboring buildings. With the new rules, it will allow basically bay windows, it will allow for it to line up to the neighboring buildings. It would also allow some green space in the front, or as the dwellings. There's really very difficult provisions to allow for corporate courtyards, as well as it doesn't always match the existing street buildings' character. Again, this would allow, you can see the building articulation, and then allowing it to align with neighboring buildings. And then one more. Front setback requirements forces many buildings to be built right to the property line and rear setback requirements, the floor plates discourage ground-level front setbacks. So this, again, allows for the depth and better layouts in the front of the building. And the rear setback allows for basically the ground level and just better façades in the front. And then on corner buildings, this is kind of that first side, actually, this is running in the back building. We have restrictive corner lot rules, which discourage wrapping around the building, so it's basically just one side. And the transition rule between lower-density districts is actually, doesn't create good building performance. And so this allows better wrapping rules, and it allows for a better step-down transition rule to the lower-density district transition. So this is, again, showing you how it applied to Community District 10. In R6 districts, on narrow streets, there would be actually no height increase. On R6 wide streets, there's a five-foot increase. And R7-1 on wide streets, there would be a five-foot increase. So that is the quality component of the presentation. The next piece is the affordability piece. And so there's these three pieces, I might break up even further. Helping seniors remain in their communities by making it easier to provide affordable senior housing and care facilities, long-term care facilities, free resources to create affordable housing by enabling positive, effective, transit-accessible, affordable housing, and support efficient buildings in inclusionary housing areas. So I'm speaking to the first ones. So New York City's population is rapidly aging, and the need for affordable senior housing far exceeds the supply. Population 65 years or older is projected to increase 40% Population 65 years and older is projected to increase 40% by 2040, which is 400,000 people. The Bronx is projected to increase 56%. So I want to start by, what is affordable senior housing? It's housing designed specifically for seniors with smaller units but more common areas and amenities. It's eligible, the eligibility is age and income restricted. Funding has been a challenge. Federal funding no longer, federal for affordable housing doesn't really exist very well anymore. The H2O2 program is no longer available for buildings, for building new buildings. And so it's a significant, you know, burden for the city to take on. HPD has been really the driver of any new affordable senior housing. So the supply, in the Bronx, more than 60% of residents below the age of 65 are now classified as low-income. To break that down even more into District 10, there's about 21,000 seniors in District 10 today. Over 2,500 seniors live below the poverty line, which is about 12%, which is even further than the just below income, so that's like the next step. So some of the zoning issues is the building envelopes are too tight for the FARs that would be provided, and the required CPC review is a hurdle and is an unknown building obstacle for housing to create. So what is the other part, which is the long-term care facility? It includes nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and it would be continuing care retirement communities, which basically is a mix of affordable housing, nursing homes, and residences. So funding for long-term care facilities has been shrinking significantly. Today, Medicare and Medicaid provide about 75% of the funding. The supply, Department of Health estimates a current shortage of 8,700 nursing beds in New York City alone. In the last 14 years, only nine nursing homes have been developed citywide. The city has half as many assisted living units per capita as other urban counties in the state. So one of the hurdles is there's a lot of oversight and regulation today, and one of the reasons that was put in place is in the 1970s, when we saw a huge influx of nursing homes. And so they weren't being regulated by the state at that time. And so New York City basically put a special permit in place that any time a new nursing home came in, we had to go through this special permit, which is a full-year public review city council process, which was a bit, so we haven't seen a lot since. Also, since then, the Department of Health, New York State Department of Health, has also started regulating them, and they regulate them quite heavily now. So what we're doing is basically redundant with what the state is doing, and so they're also being regulated twice. So those are some of the big issues with us not seeing any new long-term care facilities in New York City recently. So here is a, the quick stat, just to show you, you know, community district 10, and you have four existing nursing homes here. Up in the north, you have Bay, the Bay Park Center for Nursing Rehab at 801 Club City. That's 480 beds, it was built in 1974. Providence Rest, 200 beds, built in 1940, originally 1940. Throggs National Extended Care, 205 beds, built in 77. And you may mess up the name a little bit, Jane G. App, Jane residence, 30 beds, which were built in 2002. So why does zoning need to change? It's outdated zoning, so basically the state today has a number of terms and definitions that we haven't been able to keep place with our zoning. Some of, you know, and we're seeing a mix now of zoning and uses that we didn't see in the past. You see a lot of assisted living and nursing homes, living with independent seniors, and so this mix is something that our zoning is having trouble keeping pace with. So this zoning change is something that would help us keep pace with what the state is permitting. Also, again, the state is regulating all these things. So why does the zoning need to change, again? Multi-family districts, affordable senior housing is already allowed more for area. The zoning doesn't allow us to fit at all on the lot. In lower-density districts, so specifically in R10, R3-2, R4, R5, they actually have no height limits, even in the lower-density growth management area. And needs to reduce the redundancy regulations that have been happening with New York State and New York City with special permits. So how are we going to go about achieving that? Help seniors, so the goal is to help seniors remain in their communities. Updating definitions and uses. So now we have all of these uses and terminology, we basically are going to put them into two categories. Affordable independent residences for seniors, you'll see this acronym a lot, ARS. Basically, that was the, the previous term was known as non-profit housing for the elderly. And so that is the residential use component of senior housing. The second piece is long-term care facilities, and that is the umbrella term for all community facility uses for seniors, such as nursing homes, assisted living, and continuing care retirement communities, which are formerly our terms were nursing home and health-related facilities. So again, all of these facilities would require a license by New York State Department of Health, or the long-term care facilities would. Again, there, sometimes I'm saying it again, they require a special permit today, and but we would be looking at making them as-of-right, with the exception of in the R1 and R2 districts. So this is a quick diagram, just to show you what's today there and what is today for memory. This is the residential, basically the affordable independent residence for seniors. And then this was the, the second column is the floor areas for the nursing home and health-related facilities, the community facility piece. And basically, one couple of things that we're doing is we're standardizing the floor area between all of the uses. You may see it and think that this is a, you've got the zoning districts and it's increasing zoning, but it's actually not, because today, in the nursing home and health-related facilities, you can actually use the community facilities floor area ratios. And so when you're going in for your special permit that you're required to have, you can at the same time ask for the community facility. So this is not increasing those FARs, it's just standardizing them all. Second piece is updating the height and setbacks. So in the medium and high-density districts, allowing limited additional height to allow for the building envelope. In the lower-density districts, it's actually creating a stricter envelope and defined. So here is the allowance to allow for the, the bulk to be on the height. In R6 districts, on White Street, we're allowing for 10 extra feet, that's one story. R7 districts, narrow streets, 10 feet, one story. In R7 districts, on a White Street, 20 feet, two stories. That's the height increase that we are at the present. So in the lower-density districts, and I know that you can't all see this, so, but in your R3, so in the R4 here, you can see the teal, the, it's really the brighter colors here. In those districts, and then, there's one more. And the R3-2 here, and the R5. So that's what I'm referring to here in this next piece when I talk about the, where this would apply. So today, the nursing home and assisted living have no height limit, even in the lower-density growth management areas. The affordable senior housing has a tighter envelope, but this permitted to be a larger envelope by the City Planning Commission Authorization. So what we're proposing is an as-of-right 45 to 65-foot maximum height, so we'd actually be capping the heights now of this at 45 to 65 feet. The 45 feet is if they build within 25 feet of the street line, but they move back for within 25 feet, they go up to 65 feet. So you're looking at four to six foot. So this is the same thing as I just said, but kind of breaking it down and showing you what's permitted today and how it looks. In the R3-2, the residential has a maximum 35 feet. There's no maximum for community facility uses. This would allow a max of 45 feet for the 65 feet. Again, it's just showing you, you have R3-2, you have R4, and R5, breaking it down a little And I wanted to remind you that that is for affordable senior housing as well. So the second piece, affordability. This is to free up resources to create more affordable housing by enabling cost-effective, transit-accessible affordable housing. So this is, so these requirements for affordable housing are already low, about half those of market rate housing. So this is, this is basically the reparking conversation that, and that many of you are interested in. So today, in R3 and R4 districts, for residential, it's required to be, it's below-density growth management area, it's required at about 150%. There's some variances that kind of lumped them all together, but you're looking at one and a half parking space per minute typically. In R6, it's 57%, R7, 56%. But in affordable housing, even in lower-density growth management, is actually lower, and then the affordable senior housing is actually even lower than that. So today, in R6 districts, the parking requirement, even in these lower-density growth management areas, is 16 to 22%. In R7, it's 12.5 to 20%. So why does zoning need to change? So this is kind of one of the big points. So current parking requirements make it harder to meet the need for affordable housing. Off-street parking costs as much as $30,000 to $50,000 for parking space to provide. Residents of these affordable housing cannot pay typically the fees that are associated with it, which is $200 or $300 a month. Lower-income households own fewer cars, especially in transit served areas, and low-income seniors own even fewer. Operators report that low-income residents rarely park in these facilities. So this is kind of the, one of the big tableways is, Caffey Charities, who is largest developer of affordable housing for low-income seniors in New York City, you know, made this statement publicly, that, you know, "We have thousands and thousands of low-income seniors in our waitlist for housing. We have a waitlist for our pennant gardens. We do not have a single waitlist for parking." So this is one of the major problems, is that there's a limited pool of money for these affordable senior housing developments. Parking is very expensive to build and very few low-income seniors have vehicles. When spaces cost between $30,000 and $50,000 per space, that money can be better used on low-income, building low-income units for seniors that need them, rather than parking for people that aren't using them so often. So it's really about prioritizing the money for the low-income seniors. So one of the pieces is designated a transit zone, where auto ownership and commute by car are lower. Parking would be optional for new low-income housing, and for low-income housing, reduced parking could be, that's, for existing low-income housing, reduced parking requirements would be possible only by discretionary action. So outside the transit zone, affordable senior housing parking could be reduced as well. So this is citywide, I will zoom in to District 10, but this is to show you how it would be defined across the city. The purple is the proposed transit zone, and includes only districts that allow multifamily housing. Basically, the transit zone is within a half-mile of the subway station, and reflects the trends of lower car ownership within the transit zone. Just so you know, the darker area in Manhattan, Long Island City, and downtown Brooklyn are already exempt from requirements for affordable housing. That's why it's gray. I understand that that's a whole different conversation, but I just wanted to explain why that's a different color in my office presentation. So here is community district 10 and the transit zone. So you will see, it's a little hard to see, this area here, this is Westchester Square. This is the only area in the transit zone. Allen Bay, which also does have R6 and R7, is not in the transit zone. To encourage affordable housing, parking requirements would be eliminated for new affordable units within the transit zone, shade on that. Outside the transit zone, parking requirements for new affordable senior housing would be reduced, or would be reduced. So the third piece, and I've just about done this, is to support efficient buildings in inclusionary housing areas. So again, why is this need to change? It's designated medium and high-density districts, the inclusionary housing program promotes mixed income housing. Like senior housing, inclusionary housing is a raw more full area, the zoning doesn't allow room to fit at all. The result is less participation in the program and less affordable housing. I want to be clear, there is no, today, there's no voluntary inclusionary housing in community district 10. So this provision would only apply if basically the Mih provision that I discussed at the beginning was ever mapped in community district 10. But it would, would buildings participate in inclusionary housing program, it would allow some additional height. The proposed mandatory inclusionary housing is applied in the future, requires, which would require rezoning or special permit. So again, it's going back to the mandatory inclusionary and just tying it kind of full circle of business. So just to quickly recap, I know I'm over time, I don't want to keep, but, you know, things it doesn't do, it doesn't create a market rate FAR, no parking changes for market rate housing, no provisions to encourage teardowns, no additional FAR. It's not a rezoning. It does not change as-of-right rules for one and two-family residents. There's no reduction of green space or open space. It does not produce dramatic changes in development in any neighborhood, does not affect the lower-density growth management of city on special district regulations. It does promote ground floors, better ground floors and residential floor ceiling heights. It gives the five feet additional and 10 feet in some cases, allows for more greenery and building articulation. Supports the affordable senior housing and long-term care, updates some of the definitions, and provides predictable efficient heights. It supports free use of subsidies by allowing parking to be optional for low-income affordable housing near transit, and it supports the efficient buildings in areas not for inclusionary housing, which is not District 10. So again, I quickly already kind of went over the public review process. We're in the first 60 days. That is where I turn it back over to Martin Hand.
Thank you, Martin. At this point, we will ask for questions.
Yes, it's all.
No, the same one.
Yes.
No, I don't think we should go back.
Excuse me.
I've got it in this slide right there. You want me to run it? So I'm actually joined with Sean Brady, the Deputy Director of the Bronx Office, who will be assisting in reflections. Yes.
Okay, that last statement supports financial feasibility of housing creation. How are you going to do that?
So I can address, and what that's talking to, again, I'm Sean Brady, I'm the Deputy Director for our Bronx Office here. That is saying that the mandatory inclusionary program has to be financially feasible, so it has to work, and that's, that's all that's saying. And that's the range that we've chosen, that was shown on the next slide, the 25 to 30%. That's a number that is financially feasible for the study that we have done.
So we actually, we would be doing the study, the neighborhood study, and looking at, it's a full neighborhood study, it may be not for rezoning, but for upzoning.
But that hasn't been done yet?
Anytime, and let me, let me step back a little bit. The point your specific question was about, a lot of housing advocates have pushed for a larger percentage of mandatory inclusionary, affordable housing as part of this. That number wasn't really financially feasible, the 25 to 30% range, depending on the market, was a number we saw feasible. Now mandatory inclusionary housing itself will not be mapped anywhere as a result of this proposal. It'll only be mapped anytime the city goes through a new upzoning, which will create significant housing.
Not for the US?
No.
Or not for the US?
No. There's no current proposal for any upzoning in community district 10. In fact, in recent years, we've done a number of contextual downzones, and that's the trend that, you know, we see from New York.
Well, you know, we see buildings going up, we've got, it's just a lot.
And there's maybe as-of-right buildings, but...
Oh, roads are going way to the left.
Any other questions that will come, will come from board members? If there's anyone in the audience that you have a question... If there's anyone in the audience that you have a question, try and get a board member to speak on, on the issue that you're talking about, but the question and answer is for board members, go to the city planning. So, any board members? If you are from the public and you do want to speak, we will take form for you to formally speak. Go on once.
What's your question before that?
So, any questions from the board members?
I have a quick question, I'm a little confused about 120th presentation, it's strong, one of the slides talked about what 421A would be able to, would not be able to. Does not that legislation come out of the governor's office, not the mayor's office?
It does, and I think the intent, and I think here's the slide up here, it's just showing that this effort, and these recommendations were presented tonight, that's us looking at our zoning code, but there's a number of different elements that are part of the housing plan, and changing 421A is part of that. So we just wanted to show that this is working in unison with other efforts that are being done at state level, being done at the city level, and now the new 421A, when it does, in fact, take effect, will require affordable housing if you're to take that benefit.
And another quick question is that, you know, I've often talked to developers who, you know, they buy a piece of property for ten million, and I direct numbers here from somebody who bought a park lot for ten million, it was rezoned, it was worth a hundred and eleven million, and the city did not ask that gentleman to put anything back into their community. And several times during the presentation, you kept talking about limited buckets of money and the economic feasibility, why did you guys tap into that windfall that the developers make, on the rezoning of the property?
I mean, I think that in the future, that would happen more.
In the future, you're creating a plan now, it's getting a big plan.
I would say that this, this plan is not an upzoning, so it's not increasing the value of a specific piece of land, and whenever we try to look at doing rezoning, we try to think of them as a, as a long-term solution, we're not trying to address speculation in a certain neighborhood, we're trying to do it as part of our rational planning effort. In certain pieces, in an area we may be rezoning, we can help that there could be some speculation that go along with that, but it's something we try to avoid.
Would you go to the Westchester Square, being in transit zone? The city of New York spent a lot of time and effort creating, as well as the community, spending a lot of time and effort creating a business improvement district in Westchester Square. One of the challenges all of the local shopping districts have coming to them is parking. It's one of the big things they have to fight over in order to compete with some of the malls, with building malls all over the borough as well, making the competition even tougher. With the investment in the business improvement districts, is there a way that we can remove Westchester Square, or bids in general, from the conclusion of this program?
I would add a couple pieces to that. One, it's not looking at changing any of the required, the requirements for commercial parking. Two, it's, this is only for new senior and affordable housing.
I understand that, but if you allow them, if you lower the parking requirements in that area, and allow them to build bigger buildings with fewer parking spaces, obviously they're going to take up every space in Westchester Square and in other business areas. So you want to protect those business districts, which we fought so hard to create.
I would, I would also say that it's not going to be adding additional floor area to the, to the area around Westchester Square, but if you do believe that, that Westchester Square area is, is an area that doesn't belong in this, I would say, you know, that's something that the input we would like to have, and certainly provide us with that.
I mean, as far as the buildings themselves, those buildings could be built today, but your question is more about.
The parking that would be socially, if it is the.
The whole idea is.
If it is affordable housing.
Right, right.
And the idea behind that being, just to clear it out, because the way housing is supposed to be affordable, that means the city is giving a subsidy for that development. And the city's giving the subsidy for that development, they want that subsidy to go towards housing, instead of towards the building of parks.
The subsidy, that sucks.
Sure, and we want, that's where money to go, towards the building of housing, what is housing money, not towards the building of parks. I mean, and that's, 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 you know, it's a trade-off in that sense, it doesn't, has a limited effect on Community District 10, it's only that small area in a couple of districts around Westchester Square, but at the citywide level, you know.
Westchester Square and Pelham Bay.
Pelham Bay is not in the transit zone.
It's not?
No.
I just asked you for clarification.
No, no, but, but yeah, thank you so much, just verification, Pelham Bay is not in the transit zone.
Calm down, board.
All right, I have a question for you, Jude Toney. When you add any kind of housing, you bring in more people, you bring in more children, you bring in more cars, I don't care what your statistics say, you bring in more cars, and you increase crime. Now, how does your plan address the children that have to go to school, those cars that will be here and they have to park somewhere, and the police we need, because you're going to bring in more crime when you bring in more people? Now, can you address those three things?
I, I think what's important is that this isn't intended to create a new market. There is, the Bronx alone is expected to grow about four hundred thousand people by 2040, two hundred thousand people by 2040, no matter, no matter what we do, regardless of this proposal. The intention of this proposal is that where housing is built, where there is a growth market now, that's not in Community District 10, that housing, that that housing will be affordable for the people that live there, that seniors can stay in their communities, and that it'll be of a higher quality. That's the basic premise of this proposal. It's not intended to create new growth, it's intended to address growth. Now, in areas that we think should grow and can accommodate growth, for example, right here in the Bronx, we're, we're doing a neighborhood study along Jerome Avenue, where there could be an increase in density as a result of that. And when we do that, we also are including community improvements to go along with that growth, and that's the piece of that. We have a neighborhood development fund to address that, we're working with Department of Transportation, so in areas where we are creating new growth, which is not part of this proposal today, the neighborhood studies we're doing around the city, we are making sure that there are additional investments to go along with that growth.
How about more subway?
Andrew, I think also, like, everything that you said, except for the parking piece, all that can happen today, like, the, the development, the housing, the schools, the crime, that could happen without this proposal, like, we're not changing.
What if it doesn't happen?
If it doesn't happen, can we try to address that before you build a house?
But this is not creating new growth. The intention of this proposal is. This is not, these are renderings of examples of buildings.
This could happen today.
No, this can't happen today. This is about a building envelope in general for mid and high density districts. This is not generally referring to one and two family districts, which are the majority of Community District 10. In fact, the buildings shown here are probably our six buildings. And what it's doing is allowing more flexibility within a building envelope. It does a couple things, again, it allows for better floor-to-ceiling heights on the first floor, it allows for a little bit of setback where you could have some green space. These are not major prisons, they're us looking at our zoning to give a little bit of flexibility so you can have better designed buildings, especially when you have affordable housing being developed. Where there is affordable housing being developed, the idea is that this will allow for more flexibility within that building envelope, so that a lot of, affordable housing developers are limited in their funding, they're going to try and squeeze in the amount of units that they, they need to within their funding capacity. This allows for a little more flexibility so you can have better ground force space, and, and some better, you know, building styles, that's it. That's the quality.
It reminds me of the eighties, when you drove down the main street and, and all the abandoned buildings had fake curbs. But, when people get tired of the old look of a building, they usually purchase a single-family home or a multi-family home, and then they increase their own individual lives. And what you're saying is you're trying to create, don't do that, don't grow, stay here, we decided to build up long-term life. I have a serious problem with that. People live within a particular income, excluding senior. They want a course of where they want to live. You creating this puts them in a place where they may or may not want to be. Seniors who are in their homes do not need inclusive housing, they want senior housing. Are we eliminating social programs? Are we just going to pay for them to live in the inclusive housing?
I think the idea is that this frees up additional money to address those needs. And that's the purpose of it, to create more and better senior housing, the whole.
The lowest project, Mona had a community board tent, like you just stated, twenty-one thousand seniors residing in community board tents in the same slide, and that was a direct conflict within your own slide. If we're not pushing around community board tents, why are we counting the seniors who don't, aren't being addressed?
Where senior affordable housing is built, in Community District 10, it'll, it'll be addressed there, I mean, they'll have more flexibility.
So you are the inclusive, in that slide.
Where it can be built today, you know, it'll have a better chance of being, of the, the higher quality we talked about, and there'll be more capacity for it, there's better definitions, today it's defined in a definition that's fifty years old, we haven't looked at the definition of senior housing, it's time that we, we address that, and that's one big piece of it too, so that when senior housing is built, it can address a range of needs for seniors.
Peter?
We keep on, we keep on senior housing, and we're putting all this money, even training, and we have nothing set up for the overhead, overhead out for seniors to get out, escalators, elevators, or anything else. So how do we approve something like this, when we aren't working on the infrastructure that's going on in the first place? And you keep saying that it's on the transit hub, but then you're saying that it could affect other areas, with the senior housing and everything else. You guys came in front of us three years ago with the daycare and the doctors to make it low density, which meant for daycare, we had to supply more parking spots. But for a senior, and we said it, if you remember, what about senior daycare? And he said, well, it's that, well, here we are, we're at the senior, there's no parking for anyone to visit, there's no drop-off zones, which are now requiring with, with daycares for kids, doctor offices is putting a little bit of merger. But you say it's not really changing anything, but Community Board 10, the last fifteen years that I've been involved, has been demanding more parking in all the R six, R seven, all these zones. We've been asking for more green space. You're saying you're going to go up higher, but you asked us to approve more green space on the roofs, that would not be restricted by the height requirements. You're saying eighty-five feet, but then again, in town, don't count the ninety-five feet, so it could go closer to ninety-five feet. There's a lot of things that have been left very vague in here. There's nothing there for the vets, there's nothing there for the handicapped, you know, it's not a great plan that people a lot of detail, and it's really, you keep saying less parking, there isn't much parking in Community Board 10, which we've been telling you for the last fifteen years, which is one of the things. So I don't know how you're saying it's not going to affect anything, it's going to affect a lot. Senior citizens have people come over to visit, assisted living have people working there, nursing homes have people working there. We need more parking, you're asking us to screw up the neighborhood that much more without three-pointing parking for these senior citizens, so I don't know, there we go with it.
Yeah, again, I would just add that, that the idea here is to be able to build additional affordable senior housing units versus the parking when a new affordable senior housing development is being built.
We were, we're trying to keep people in the communities that they've lived in their whole lives, we haven't seen nursing homes, you know, Community Board 10 has four nursing homes, there's a huge need for nursing homes, we're not saying that there would be more nursing homes.
We're warning.
What's that? Well, we're, we're not, you know, we're letting the market, but, I mean, we're, we're putting height on something, like, I mean.
Did you drive here or did you take a train here?
Again, this is limited to the area around Westchester Square in Community District 10.
Did you drive here or did you take a train here?
Can I, can I emphasize, can I emphasize once again, I'm getting loud, I don't want to speak? Thank you.
Which part?
Annie Bowler?
Is there going to be any kind of guarantee, if you build senior housing here, that seniors from this area will get into it, because we do have senior housing, and the majority don't come from here?
Yeah, I mean, H P D. So there, depending on the subsidy that they receive, typically it's H P D, and I, currently, there's a fifty percent requirement for people within the community to have those houses, they are primary, so, I mean, you may not feel like it's enough, that might be something that you could, again, address, as a statement from a. He could say.
They should have a hundred percent allocation for the stuff, it's not fifty percent.
Thank you.
All right, Mike?
See, the problem is, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I don't think it's going to do much for, for stock and shelters, I mean, Gina de Blasio is not really helping the people that are really on the street. But, but the problem is, in the last eight years or so, I can count in my head right now, there've been ten big apartment buildings from Westchester Square to Pelham Bay, without this plan. And, and the community board under leadership and the elected officials have asked for parking, 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 have asked for, please, you take away our drug enforcement, please, you make us fight over and over again, and so then everybody's afraid, because you've put up a plan there, and without the plan, this is happening, and, and we can't stop them. And if you have a one-family house, and four, five floors gone. See, and if you would give us a parking lot, maybe Westchester Square a parking lot, and Pelham Bay, you could get, you give us some other things, then we could, people could trust you, and, but, you know, you're not doing that, you don't listen to anything that the board says, and not the board's work, the board is acting very strong for its community, and so is the elected officials, but it's like, it's like, oh, we're a nice, sleepy neighborhood, and there's not much crime, but, you know, sooner or later, after a couple of decades, then it comes. And you got, so you see what's happening with we, with our students over being in our area, because people have been moving in by the thousands, and it's times that you gave us some good faith input there and results, and then people will be so, you know, so that's what I have to say.
I mean, you can kind of address some of the things. Yeah, I mean, you bring up some good points, and I think that we have looked at this area over the last ten years, you know, in two thousand eight, the Bronx Network is in, which was two hundred forty-two blocks, we created the lower density growth management area to preserve the entire area, two thousand six, Pelham Bay is in. But I, I understand that there was already some development happening, and sometimes it's a cause and effect, but we, we understand what this community is, and, you know, in two thousand ten, we increased the lower density growth management area, increasing the parking in some of the R six and R seven ones for the market rate housing. For, in two thousand eleven, again, for medical offices and daycare, you know, so we have, in the last ten years, we've done numerous. You know, so we have, in the last ten years, we've done numerous things to continue to make this community be what it is. You know, and we understand what that is. And the area, I mean, I understand that any loss of parking is a concern. But, you know, we're talking about affordable senior housing and.
All right, I'm taking three more questions. I'd like to have Hannah.
You know, but I'm worried that your program is for the seniors that are in community board ten. Because, you know, that was thrown at us once before on a building that was put on Westchester Avenue within Westchester Square. Right across from St. Peter's. It was supposed to be middle income. Then after it was built, it wasn't, it was low income with the provision of homeless people going in there also. And it was also, what you're saying now, fifty percent will be open to the community. I don't think five families came from the community that went into that building. So community board ten is more taking care of our own seniors, but you're bringing in something else. And it's not right. And she does not right.
Hold Mary. Mary Jane.
We need responsive city government. We need responsive city government. And it's very obvious that you are not listening to what this community is saying. We had a down zoning in two thousand eight. We're asking you to downzone, not upzone. We're asking you for more parking, not less parking. We're asking you for our seniors to be, as everyone is saying, here. Every senior that lives here, they have doctors here, they have family here. It's the same thing with children. You have, you don't look at the infrastructure, you wanna build, 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 but you don't do what comes first. And it is very frustrating to do that. Listen to the people who live here. We have to be here every day. We don't want the traffic. We want our kids to be in schools, not in trailers. We want our seniors, our parents, to be with us. And you are not listening. It just.
All right, still here.
Thank you very much, Paul. This is an observation, one of the big observations toward this is a life of property. So what you're trying to do is enhance whatever has existed, an ant-fora area ratio, ant-drugging height, et cetera. But I'm reminded, I've been in this neighborhood for like fifty years already. We had an opportunity for one of the biggest pieces of property, it was called Mortis Plus. They have an enormous, the state owned it. What was it turned over to? Private developers. Did they get any senior housing? Did they get any schools? What they do, all private developers. Where were you guys? Yeah, you guys are like the seven year locusts. You guys are not the best, you're trying to make my life wonderful. But every time you leave, you've devastated it. And you're just like, listen, George, they're telling you you're devastating a community which is impossible. Now, I know you're gonna make a magic. You're gonna make it on the party. Make your presentation and we're gonna load you down.
I gotta go, Mr. Boyko wanted to speak.
Thank you. I mean, your presentation is very well said, but I think we're putting the cart before the horse. You're asking us to make changes here, but at the same time, what you're asking us to vote on, if we bring in more low-income people, it brings in more children. No fat, older, elderly families have more children. Where do you put them in the schools here that our schools don't have enough space right now? Again, parking is an issue. Crime becomes the big issue. I think all that needs to be addressed beforehand. This is a very closely a community, community board ten. And what community board actually needs is the city committee here in Hough Creek or North to keep our seniors here in the homes that they're in with a social assistance. That's where we're lacking, not what you're proposing.
Just in perspective, again, this is a citywide proposal. The direction of Brooklyn, we have gone to Brooklyn, we're going to Queens, and we're going to Staten Island. And we're going to get to every community board in the entire city. And we have been to community board ten with three down zonings, as Jotan said. This is a citywide proposal. We're presenting that information. It's addressing a major problem we have in the city with housing that's affordable, with housing for seniors that's affordable, and for better quality of both of us. And that's the intent of that. So just let's get that straight.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me, I ask, I gave you rules. Please, ma'am, please, ma'am. Come on, can I, can you give us some water here? Okay, the questions are somewhat becoming redundant now, all right? And well, you're concerned.
I don't like.
It's not about that, man. It's really not. I wanna try and get everybody's voice in here, and we all still have time. Colonel, you are.
I'll be very short. I'm a former retired military officer, pretty high rank. I want to just compare this to a military operation. You know what it takes to support one enrichment, about twenty others in the back end? Food, supplies, gasoline, everything else. What we're doing here is you're talking about housing, forgetting about all the support, the major support that's behind that housing when you bring in more people and you bring in an operation, just what I said before, one enrichment, twenty, I think it's even more. And that's the thing, you're not considering the support behind it with that one piece of housing, you know, and all the people that you're gonna bring in. So you're looking at an overall basis, you're only considering one aspect, you have to consider the whole operation of supporting the troops.
At this point, this is the last question, question for me. It appears that under this plan, if this plan, even with its lack of communication going forward, it appears that if this plan goes through, there would be no board, community board input in this process or input to the borough president on this process. This would be rolled out of city planning and downtown. Can you explain what the thing might be for that?
Again, this isn't a plan, here are two text amendments to zoning. They'll go through the regular process that a zoning text amendment goes through. And again, anytime that the first text amendment in terms of inclusionary housing is mapped anywhere, which it won't be as part of this, when it is mapped, it will go through the regular Euler process that will come through the community board as any other land use action does.
I'm sorry, I just wanna counter that. In NIH document, it basically said that the final analysis, when you're doing the analyze, the goal between the city council member and the city planning commission, there was nothing in that timeline that indicated really more of a whole project.
Just as any, and I'm exaggerating, just as any land use review will go through, it'll come through the same way, which is it goes to the community board, the community board votes on it, goes to the city planning commission, and it goes to council. It'll go through as a regular Euler action, the same way it goes today. It'll be mapped every time it goes on.
Let me just explain, he's referring to the section when they request a waiver, a developer requests a waiver to, for financial reasons, to not meet those requirements. They could go directly to the city planner.
As a legal requirement, there has to be a DSA gap in any event.
The DSA would require the public review.
Well, you need to, I think, you just, I have a suggestion, you need to stress that once you're ready.
Sure.
All right. So at this point, I wanted to actually owe the audience in terms of their feelings towards the plan. And I think the easiest way to do that is to say, those of you in the audience that are for this plan, put your hand up. Anyone in favor of the plan, please show us your hand in favor of it to go through. Two, everyone opposing the plan, just show your hands, okay? You didn't have to show me your hand. We didn't want anyone outstanding. Again, it's on, John, you give a presentation.
What about you, Paul, for speaking part?
Okay, I'm going for that. Okay, at this point. Okay. Dan Holm.
Hello, great, my name's Dan, I'm here on behalf of Senator Klein, and I've got a letter here.
Can you come up there?
Hello, great, I'm sorry, for those of you here to get copies on the way in, I can pass them out when I'm finished. This is Cindy from Senator Klein, I'm a mayor's affordable housing plan. One size fits all is for t-shirts, not for his own plans. The mayor built a plausible, inscrutable, and zoning for quality, affordable plan, applies uniform ideas to neighborhoods across the city to increase the affordable housing cycle in your city. But in a bold effort to create needed units, forgotten is the character of residents in places and places like Frog's Neck, City Island, Country Club, Pelham Bay, and the rest of the community board ten. This plan will reduce some of the restrictions imposed in two thousand and three sections of our neighborhoods, take away building setbacks and result in, that result in attractive unit spaces. And worst of all, it would eliminate the required parking facilities, structures built near train stations. While it's noble to recognize our seniors in affordable housing and hardworking residents due to, this approach is wrong-headed. In this day and age, people own cars, even if they live within ten blocks of the subway, are already crowded streets, cannot sustain additional street parking, would also lead to additional pollution as frustrated motorists are forced to circle around the streets desperately searching for a spot. Both those of height restrictions planned by community board ten of eleven, democratically enacted by the city council, violate the collective wishes of local residents who have advocated against crowded buildings, more traffic congestion, and thus greater areas left unprotected by zoning measures. Better ways exist to construct affordable housing and to help seniors with rent costs. I led the fight in the Senate, State Senate, to increase the cap to fifty thousand dollars for senior rent increase exemption. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Better ways exist to construct affordable housing and to help seniors with rent costs. I led the fight in the State Senate to increase the cap to fifty thousand dollars for the rent increase exemption and the disabled rent increase exemption provide rent increases for seniors and disabled residents. My office is worked with the sign of eligible residents for both of those programs. This year, I also secured fifty million dollars from Mitchell Wamba Housing. The expansion of this program is something I advocate for, will increase the number of low and middle-income units available to New Yorkers. A way exists to build affordable housing and to make housing more affordable. Like screen, if you programs do progress, it's without a proposal, it just doesn't fit. I applaud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. This letter is written in his voice on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and addressed to the chairperson of the committee, Mr. Sullivan, and wants committee members. Councilman Dr. writes, as Kelly proposed, I cannot support the plan as it reduces parking and waived parking requirements in our community while allowing for an increase in density and height from residential zones presently existing. This plan reflects the face of the contextual zoning now in place and ignore the fight I and members of our community successfully raised when designating Bronx Community Board Ten as a lower-density growth management area. While the plan in its present form appears to be a giveaway to developers, it bears to mention your support, the role of the community when negotiating on behalf of its residents and its local infrastructure. I urge the members of this committee to vote no on this plan. Signed, Councilman Blue James.
At this point, we are gonna open up for the speaking portion. Those people who are speaking hard, they were asking to come forward and make their statement. The first person to speak is Ms. Sandy Love. Michelle Torioni.
I'm gonna try and get this tight at the time.
I'm not gonna repeat what everybody's saying, right? Parking is horrible, people. It's kinda like tricked everybody, telling you. I felt like we were being tricked and constantly told that this was about senior affordable housing and how they want to keep the seniors from this community in the community, yet they tell us on the second round that only fifty percent is required to live in these houses, which is not fair. It should be a hundred percent because it's for our seniors in our community. That's what we want. We want a hundred percent. And what's the incentive for somebody who's buying a piece of property to build a senior housing unit in lieu of affordable housing? What kind of incentive are you encouraging them to build something for seniors instead of for low-income people? Is there any incentive for them to do that? They might just build affordable housing, low income. They might get more money or, and if they're getting incentives to build these properties, why can't we force them to pay for the parking that we need? They're getting takebacks from the government, why can't they pay for the parking? Why do we have to pay for the parking or people that live there have to pay for these spaces? I think I'm a token of the world here. I just wanna remind all of us who are part of New York City, what we're liking about. I also wanna say that I've read the plan straight through. There's a lot of really good stuff in there. A lot of good stuff for a lot of people who are suffering in this city, people who are working core, people who are working sixty hours a week and can't afford their rent, like my son, who had to move back home and wants to stay in this community. Excuse me. Affordable housing is just that, it's affordable housing. It's partially subsidized by the government, yes it is. But it allows people, working class people like you and me, to live in their communities. There's also other good stuff in there, they sell it for affordable housing, which is desperately needed because over the last twelve years or so, developers, encouraged by the previous administration, focused only on building luxury housing. Now finally, we're getting some affordable housing, which is desperately needed, okay. There's other stuff in there, too, that maybe doesn't affect all of us individually, and I pray maybe it never will. But there's issues to reduce homelessness in there, to reduce shelter populations by creating housing for the homeless, by also dealing with the shelter kickbacks and the huge rents, et cetera, and bringing back grant subsidies so people don't lose their apartments if they fall back on the payment. There's also stuff in there about housing for people with disabilities in addition to housing, you know, for seniors. So I would strongly advise all of you to read the plan cover to cover. And while the life it may not apply specifically to families, after all, and this is exempt from a lot of it, this is true, for where the fortune it was. But there are people in our city who are suffering and desperately need help. And this plan at least is recognizing for the first time in a dozen years. first time in a dozen years, the needs of other New Yorkers and not sweeping it all under the rug as it has been for so long. I read this plan and I was thrilled and happy to see that finally, some of these serious issues, which have been exacerbated over the last decade, are finally coming to the fore and being dealt with. As a vision for New York City housing, I think it's great, it hits the right notes. Are there issues, and they will be addressed individually in each individual community, no doubt, but overall, it could bring a lot of help to a lot of people who need it, that you can hear.
What they do understand, there's another part of the affordable, uh, housing, which is not part of this plan, which a lot of people in this room, in fact, who's the AFL-CIO, just put a billion dollars up for renovating two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand out of our pension funds and everything. So it is being addressed, we're just saying that this needs to go back to drawing board and. No, no, just letting you know that. Thank you, Sandy. I will never fucking change. It is not for us. John, you said you have another meeting. You'll go right after him, sir.
What is this, I object, jump in the line, what's going on, Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, uh.
Well, hold on, there's a line here.
Uh, thank you, I'm sorry I missed the presentation, I was coming from the city and civic meeting, that's why they allowed me to go before, because otherwise I would have been there at all time, I wasn't watching the Met game. Uh, I just am here tonight, I was reading over, I didn't catch this presentation, but there's a wealth of resources on your website, and thank you for putting that up there. Uh, it says, uh, I guess for the first question, for the City Island Special District, it kind of implies that the parking requirements would be changed there, so I just wanted to hand this to you, and just ask for clarification on that. Um, obviously, and I think Sandy went into this, and I'm gonna try to keep it under time, there's a lot of loadables in, uh, the mayor's request, however, and when you look at the Bronx as a whole, you would see that, you know, forty-two, forty-eight percent of Bronxites don't own a car. Obviously, looking at it from a bird's eye view might make sense. However, if you were to look at the eighty-second Assembly District, which covers all of Board Ten, uh, the amount of car-free households is only thirty-three-point-two, that means two-thirds of people have at least one vehicle they have access to. And then, in my job now at the Health and Hospitals Corporation, and my other job at the, uh, at formerly for New York State Senator Klein, I used to handle a lot of demographic information, so I just, and I'm gonna submit a copy to the Department of City Planner, and these are all the rates that the census measures of auto ownership in the Bronx. And if you look at this in our district, it's even more startling, and I'll just go through them very quickly. In Helen Bay, only seventeen percent of people don't own a car. In Country Club, only thirteen percent of people don't own a car. In Bronx Neck, only fourteen percent of people don't own a car. In Westchester Square, it's fifty percent, that's probably why they're in, uh, one of these other zones, which is in that PowerPoint proposal, and in City Island, it's nine percent. So I've just asked, because I didn't catch your entire presentation, that you take back these auto ownership rates, and realize that maybe what is good for the city, and maybe even what's good for the Bronx, might not be good for some of the communities within this district. Thank you very much. End the civic road of weather, and during the public comment period, I'll submit that for the record, just.
Mr. Bernard.
Just with regard to elderly in the neighborhood here, and public housing that we have today, I know a lot of people who work for Nisha, and a lot of people who live in Middletown Plaza, there's a parking lot back there of approximately thirty spaces, which are currently rented by people who live in that building. A lot of the well-elderly around here do own cars and do rent spaces with senior citizens housing. So, I don't know, like half of charities or anybody else who's getting their information from, they're wrong. And the other thing is, I don't know if anybody else feels this way, but I, I live in the Bronx, I've been here thirteen years, I own a private house, I feel like the Bronx has become a dumping ground for all these projects and everything. Imagine Long Island City, I work on Port Street, I work in Long Island City. Every corner, every street, the past year and a half I've been there, everything is wrecked, torn down, they're building luxury star risers, and I don't think any of us could probably afford to live in. This is, it's just, it just seems to me like they're dumping all the stuff in these neighborhoods. I mean, look what they go through up in Wakefield, all the stuff that they put in there, it's always in our papers, all sorts of, uh, programs, meaning that they dump in middle-class neighborhoods. And it's the same thing that's going on here, and I think we really have to stop it. Thank you.
I'm gonna just read something, I have a prepared statement. The mandatory inclusion housing proposal is a step in the right direction addressing the need to build small communities in our city. It does, however, have some critical shortcomings which need to be addressed through the inclusion of additional measures. Once a rezoning happens, the community will have no further say in the process and will be forced to deal with the consequences. Only a proposal which pays good jobs for affordability levels appropriate to the neighborhood can ensure that the city remains a place where we can build communities, raise children, and offer them a future. Developers can and should be asked to give back the real ways to the communities where they learned to make their money. This is especially critical when developers are being allowed to build with increased density through these rezonings. We need a proposal that allows developers to develop with increased density only if they agree to good jobs, affordability appropriate to the neighborhoods, local hire agreements, and anti-displacement measures. The real affordability of new housing must match the common incomes of the vast majority of people living in the neighborhoods. The Blasars mandatory inclusion zoning will not do that. In fact, it will create housing that is mismatched to the neighborhoods rather than aligned with the incomes of longtime residents without attaching any standards to the jobs created through these processes. The mandatory inclusion in rezoning efforts is currently conceived will not create enough affordable housing for low-income New Yorkers disproportionately impacted by the affordability crisis. Most residents in low-income neighborhoods like Dos Lays, increased density, and rezoning within the next year will not benefit at all from the new housing created under the current plan. New housing promoted as affordable in these areas will be too expensive and out of the reach of hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who live there already. To avoid gentrification and displacement, the housing plan will need to produce deep affordability and good jobs for low-income residents in the neighborhoods that will be rezoned. Low-wage workers and their families living in these neighborhoods that will be rezoned will not be helped by this mandatory inclusion zoning in any way, they will be left behind. There was a broad agreement that economic diversity is a worthwhile and necessary goal for neighborhoods, but enduring the needs of low-income New Yorkers is not a way to achieve it. As it stands, this overarching commitment to create or preserve a two-hundred-thousand units of affordable housing still raises a fundamental question, affordable for whom? The answer is not for low-income New Yorkers, most in danger of being priced out of their neighborhoods.
Next is Patty Justiniano.
I made some notes along the way while I was doing this presentation, it was gonna be a little bit all over the, uh, the place, so, he detailed vibrant and diverse neighborhoods. I think we have that here. Um, there was a notation that fifty-five percent of renters' households are extremely burdened. I'm a homeowner, I made the sacrifice to be a homeowner, I'm burdened as well. Affordable housing, um, I think one big issue that has not been addressed is, once someone is in an affordable housing apartment, they can stay there for life. There's no reevaluation that they've all of a sudden gotten a job that they're making eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, I drive by some lower-income housing, and they are nice cars and that parking lot that I have, and multiple ones. So it's a good use of doing how you're able to do something. Um, there's also no detailing in here as far as zero lot line. Um, does this say because somebody is in an area that they're R-seven, R-six, they can build a building right next to you, there's no easement, there's nothing in place, um, to help the little homeowners that are in the area here. Um, there's also, uh, there's a notation, no provision for tear downs. Um, okay, so you're not giving, you know, them any extra cost if they're gonna tear down existing homes, but you're also not saying you can't tear down a two-family home and put up eight, ten, twelve stories next to whatever. Um, and there's a notation that it doesn't affect lower density, it, it does affect it, let's, let's look at our neighborhood, we've had, um, there's a gentleman that said we've had ten or so apartment builders. Look in a four-block radius, we have way more than that that have gone up. Um, looking to improve the quality, um, looking to improve the quality for whom? Not for the people that live in this neighborhood, the quality of the neighborhood, as it was sixteen years ago when I bought my home here. Um, you all know I have a house down the block that they built a lovely building right up against my windows, I have a court between myself and a developer. Um, green space, garden areas, um, AKA garbage areas, who are the ones that build, that's too real, nobody, they don't maintain the green areas, they put all the garbage, people also own their tiny garbage cans. Our seniors, it'd be great if they could afford to stay in the neighborhood, I don't know that I can afford to stay in the neighborhood, um, but they should be our seniors if they're gonna stay there, they also need parking. Our seniors do drive, they drive, how many, how many seniors are here that drove tonight? Okay. We've got seniors that drive, you also want to be able to visit your senior family members, so there needs to be something. Um, there was also a comment in that said, that I don't know where it went, um, that there was a, we went with the bulk, we increased the heights to give that, wait, uh, kept the height, but, kept the height but gave the bulk, I believe. That was one of the things, so we gave the, you, you.
Okay, I'm gonna read fast. Um, let's say, the ZQA, which is proposed, is a proposal to change the wording of the zoning regulations to foster housing growth and affordability. It runs counteractive to what I hear my neighbors' wishes to be for this community. They want to keep the value in their homes and the quality of life by encouraging low growth with concrete clusters of homes that are only affordable to working-class people. This is not a terrible goal. This used to be what America strived for, immigrants and first-generation families worked multiple jobs, saved their money, did without luxuries to send their children to school, eventually purchased a home, which they improved, maintained, and cared for their elderly in. This was America, this was New York State, this was New York City, this was the Bronx. And, um, now the Bronx seems to be a dumping ground for all the non-working, low-income people that reside in New York City. We have something like eighty-five percent low-income residents, I didn't get to look that up, but I heard that. Seniors and others of limited income, um, should be spread throughout the city to balance out our borough. You talk about inclusion of rezoning, well, let's include the small, middle class in the Bronx and improve on that. We should be fighting to improve more residents that work at decent-paying jobs, eat in our restaurants, shop in our retail malls, buy homes, pay taxes, and support the low-income, oil-digent, distributed families throughout the city. We already have our waterways polluted from over-taxed sewers, we have accessory blocking our streets at basically every turn. We are the main flight pattern for LaGuardia, which should limit height on many goings. This area is full of flood zones with little hope for evacuation, more schools need more school buses, and more parents driving all over the side streets. With no parking associated with these proposed buildings, we have all the deliveries blocking the horrific traffic that already exists. I say we put more people to work building the infrastructure that this borough was desperate for. Stop granting favors for developers of housing, and start maintaining the tax-paying class and improving on that.
Next is Beth, Beth Danovich.
My comments are based on not wanting more people coming into the Bronx for the following reasons. Fences are not allowed to be more than six feet tall because they're obstructions, buildings are huge, huge obstructions. A homeowner that lives in the Bronx in the same house for all their lives, I've been here all my life, over, over forty years, not mine. Now look out, the window, see a wall of bricks. The quality of life of people that already live here is changing because of the abundance amounts of people moving into the Bronx, maybe some even in violations. Driving, parking, shopping has all become extremely hard to do in a calm and timely manner. There is too much congestion, even doctor visits become an issue. This makes people angry. Our quality of life is changing without any help from the city. Our situation worsens especially with welcoming more people that cannot play their way and are getting things handed to them without working hard for them. I don't mean, this is not even my statement, but, I don't mean people that really need it, and seniors, I didn't know it was about seniors, but seniors of course, we should help anybody that needs help, but not people that are not working, or trying to work, or getting evaluated to work. When talking about the, uh, opportunity gap, why are we speaking of future generations having a better life? This is becoming at the expense of the current generations. The public schools are so full, trailers have been used as classrooms, or more schools have been built. But when a playground for the children needs to be on the roof of the school, doesn't that say something? When do we stop inviting more people? People like myself use what I would have had for vacation money to send my children to private schools, to give them the opportunity they deserve. I, like many, save the city a lot of money by doing so, and I get nothing in return, not even in my taxes. Since we're saving the city so much money, no matter what our income is, we should see some relief. But instead, my tax dollars are going for more people to infringe on my children now. Getting ahead and giving my children what they need is getting harder and harder because of the current changes that are made. The Bronx needs to be preserved where the working class has every opportunity to succeed. The middle class has now become the lower-class, I feel, in the Bronx, and we receive nothing. We need to restore it, not alter it, because restoration is a new way to recognize old values. By restoring, we will reduce local property crime and increase property values, which the people that live here now need to depend on.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to thank everybody that showed up here, and wish next time we have a lot more. Uh, because this is a very, uh, situation here. Uh, I live in the Bronx, I'm fifty-seven years over there in the Bronx, and I love it, okay? I came from another country to have a better life here, and I think I deserve the best for, for myself and for everybody here. Uh, we do not need other affordable houses, we do not need them. If, let's worry about ourselves, okay? Let the people from the neighborhood be here, okay? Let's stay together, and let's worry about where we're gonna live here. We don't want to step out of here, okay? We came to the Bronx, we want to stay here in the Bronx in our hometown, okay? Thank you very much.
That's for last. Good evening. Uh, I'm speaking, I'm, let me stumble over again, okay? I'm president of Westchester Square Civic. For the last five years, I've had, seen our community go downhill. What we don't need is this affordable housing. If you build this affordable housing, you gotta. If you build this affordable housing, you gotta consider, we have private homes that have eleven and twelve people living in them. What are you gonna do? You gonna fill these houses up with all the people from these homes that are in them? Our parking is nonexistent. This is gonna destroy the business district. I don't wanna hear liberals speak about my community after they move out. When they moved out of the area, that same house had three fires, had forty violations of sanitation, they brought in garbage. The man lived someplace else with a camera. We are striving to make a community. Bringing in affordable housing is handouts. We have houses that supposedly middle class, which there is no more middle class, have put money into their homes to try to build a community. A community is a collaboration between the businesses, the churches, and everything. We need to step back in time and try to rebuild our communities. This is a handout. I deployed, you know, we have, as I speak also, we had a shelter that was built. We didn't want that. I just wanna be a little clear on something I wanna say is, Councilman Vaca, with all due respect, I hope that you, what you spoke of, that you're gonna support the community, you actually do it. I've seen so much of the twists that they come out, the politicians, and they say they're gonna help and support us, and then the twist goes in there. It's also with Klein, Benedetto, with respect, I'm saying is, support us, really support us, because you know what? This city is finished. There is no city. The people are the city. What I would like tonight is the people to unite. Westchester Square, we're gonna be the hardest hit. So, we need your support, the same way we will support you. The way we're gonna win is each person supports the community. If it affects us and our community goes downhill, your community is next. But also, another thing I'd like to say is, Blondella Avenue, Jimmy Vaca said it was filthy. The reason it was filthy, because they put up cleaning signs for three o'clock in the morning. Who would clean the streets? Another thing I would like to say is that Blondella area, they're gonna start building homes over there and stores. We don't need that. That's gonna be to cut off this affordable housing. That's gotta be stopped too.
Just one thing. What's gonna happen with the buildings that are already built? That's my concern.
Right, it could affect adjacent buildings.
That's, that's a pretty broad question. Which building, this is not changing the zoning...
Ford, that's still not occupied. They're built and that's it. What's gonna happen?
And we're not changing anything that's happening with the buildings.
Can I get a motion to close out?
I haven't had a chance to see it. I signed, I signed my paper.
Yeah, I know you did, and I was told that you had seen it.
No, I didn't see it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's Jimmy's Cemetery Palm Bay Community Movement's safety observation. I think everything's already been said here, but I do want to start this by thanking City Planning. And I wanna thank this man here. I spent four hours with him, possibly in about three weeks. Five months ago, they approached this community. Five months ago, I was on the phone with City Planning downtown complaining that we're not gonna have Palm Bay. It's gonna be destroyed. And I was happy when this man came to the community board, three months ago or four months ago. What did he say? I was ready to grab him by the throat. And the first thing he said, Palm Bay is not, has been removed from the transit zone. One victory, thank God. Mandatory housing, second victory. Not one part of this mandatory housing falls into our area. Affordable housing, which by the way, it starts at twenty-eight thousand dollars you have to make. That's the low end. Twenty-eight thousand dollars for Westchester Market is considered low income. Now, what happened to our area? It affects R-six, R-seven. Everyone, R-six, R-seven, your homes are not R-six, R-seven. R-threes, R-fours, R-fives. So, it doesn't affect anything in community board ten. While it might apply to other areas in the city, I'm concerned about Palm Bay, drugs, Met Palm Bay, and City Island also, which does not affect. So, I'm happy just in case, and thank you City Planning for excluding community board ten, just in case the mayor gets it. So, I'm very happy for that. Now, having said that, I wonder where all these people are, where myself, the lady down there with the blue jacket, asked about the house, when we go to protest at seventeen oh one, where they knocked on two family homes and putting up eighteen, twenty-two apartment buildings? Where are all these people? Where was this board? Where was Jimmy Vaca? Where is everyone? We were protesting thirty-one oh nine. The woman said, "We have three other projects in this community." Where are all these people? They come up here because it looks good. They're picking on the mayor. Well, I've been picking on the politicians. I've been picking on them for years for not doing their job. Everyone, grow some of this. Board, grow some of this. And owe your accountability to your elected officials. Mayor, De Blasio, we're not gonna touch at City Hall. But Mr. Vaca and our elected officials, you have an impact. You tell them what you want, and I want everyone to stop grandstanding here. All these people that never come to any rallies, never signed a petition. I wanna thank again City Planning for excluding and saving our neighborhood just in case this does go through. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. So, I assume, but any comments that you can add, whether it be supporting any of it or anything that you're opposed to, the more you can provide in your recommendation, the more helpful it is, because as you said, this is citywide, so we're taking everything from every community district, and so we're trying to understand what are the big issues across all the community districts. And so, the more information you can provide on anything detailed, or even if you do support a piece of it, that's really helpful for us to know. Thank you.
We did, uh, meet with some of the other lords on this issue. We all have came to a consensus of the same regarding the issue. However, we do have our comments, and we will also gather the comments made tonight, those soliciting that, well, some of those not soliciting, and they will go into our, uh, go into the mayor. At this point, I guess it's a vote from the board members, and we pass. That, uh, all of those in favor of this plan, raise your hand. Anyone in favor of this plan?
Before we go to a vote, I know we talked a little bit, but I wanted to hear something, and I wanna say something before we go to the vote. I know you called for a vote, but if it's, if it's...
Mike, can we do this quickly now?
I'm gonna do it quickly.
Basically.
Okay. If, because I am a liberal, and I'm also a veteran, and, and if this plan really was to help the poor, I'm talking about the teens and the, uh, the, uh, the twenties, well, and disabled and HIV and everything. This plan talks like a zip in the glossary and some other places where the different funding is about New York, New York. New York, New York agreements, every Republican mayor and governor has said it has helped disabled. The New York, New York agreements that has helped veterans, HIV, mentally ill, get them off the streets, and people that are making fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, this is not mentioned here except in the glossary and, uh, going forward. If it helped those people, I would say, yes, I'm for the plan, because I know most of the times it's not gonna affect our area anyway to any great extent. But the apartment buildings that are going up, the mayor should see something. And I'm not a De Blasio fan, but I am a fan. This plan really doesn't need to happen, because De Blasio and Councilman Renoso and other people have done something in where they're making developers do thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent of, of lower-income housing of forty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, eight thousand, which is what this plan is mostly of. So, it's not, it's not gonna help the poor, and you're not doing things to help people that are disabled, the poor, the veterans, the mentally ill, so we don't get shelters in apartment buildings that can't be filled. And for that reason, I'm not for this plan. But I wanted to say that because the mayor has really done this plan by, with the city council, in making developers, where they're, they're doing their high rises and everything, instead of twenty, eighty-twenty, they're now eighty-thirty, eighty-forty, eighty, I mean, you know, fifty-thirty, you know what I'm saying? So, that's what I wanted to say.
Let me just say, about what Michael said, it's correct. I'm talking. Overall, the goals of the plan, and I meant to say the overall, are good for affordable housing, be it for seniors, be it for veterans, be it for youth that are homeless, et cetera. They are good. Specifics have not been met in the plan. Input from the communities, be it the Bronx, Brooklyn, et cetera, have to be included. At this point, overall, the goals are good, but, and this is a big but, if specifics raised tonight are not met, there's gonna be major, I don't wanna say wars here, but whatever, regarding the plan and the mayor's tenure, and I've always supported the mayor. I join the community wanting distinct specifics. I am voting for the overall plan. That's how I am, and I hope we see what the community needs. Thank you.
All right, uh, again, I would just say, we have had some meetings on this. Everything that's been said tonight is just echoing what was in the meeting. The main point is that all the comments that we had, robust to non-robust, we will be making adjustments of. Obviously, if you're gonna make a plan, it's supposed to be to the future. You thought that present population, it's where it's going to be. You can't get there without having those conversations, and I think that is the biggest shortfall in this. And with that, I will ask, can I get a motion to move to a vote? Okay, all right. Again, the question is, all of those in favor of the Quality and Affordability Tax Amendment, those that are for, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you, Dr. M. All those...